Seven o'clock, I'll call the Monday, May ninth, 2022, meeting of the Oxford Planning Board to order. First on the agenda, plans not requiring subdivision approval, we have none. I'll skip down to action items, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of April 11th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
I abstain.
Any discussion, any, any problems, no? Okay. Roll call.
I abstain.
I vote aye.
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 I vote aye. Carried. Okay, the next action item, 56 Howard Street, acceptance of as-built and recommendation for occupancy. Okay. This thing, we've been looking for additional data to support the as-built. Yeah, it's got, we got something from the building inspector regarding perimeter drainage. And I was kind of wondering if we were gonna hear any more from the DPW. He's the one that basically said that he couldn't find stuff at that time.
That's true.
Wasn't it?
Yeah.
It was like the swale.
Right, but they wanted to show, right?
Couldn't see the outlet pipe or the foundation drain. We haven't received anything further from DPW.
I know they want to see a picture, right? They want to see a picture of it, which they have.
Rich, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Memo, right? He says he did a, did a sidewalk and he saw it. What is the, why do we, why do you put the section underneath it? The whole requirements for a, why did he do that?
I don't know why.
I thought it was like a trick, you know, like we read the top and then it was supposed to read the bottom, or?
I, I don't, that's the commissioner's memo, I, I don't know why he did that.
Good.
Yeah, it's a building code requirement.
No, I know, but it's like, did he put it there because we were questioning it, or somebody was questioning it, or?
It was never, it was already done and no one had seen it yet, and no, right?
I think at the last meeting, the board wanted verification from the building commissioner that he had inspected the perimeter drain.
Okay.
So I'm informed this morning that the town board would be looking for a memo from him.
Okay, he gave it.
Right.
Which is all well and good, but this, the problems first started with the DPW. And I thought we'd get a follow-up memo saying that all his concerns have been addressed. And time has gone by, there may be, those things could be finished again in the.
I think that's what happened, yeah.
So I'm, I'm wondering why we have nothing from the DPW on this particular.
I'm surprised Dan Dagnier's not here.
Huh?
Dan's here.
Oh, he is.
Yeah.
Okay, I take that back.
I'm just.
Dan, come on up. I thought that's all we were looking for, they wanted to see evidence that it was done, and that's.
It looks like they.
Right, Dan, that's what we were looking for, it was already done, they wanted a picture, a picture of it showing in the foundation and stuff.
Typically, it's the building inspector who does the inspection.
Yeah.
Not the, not the town engineer.
All right, okay.
Never, never in my life, doing this work, is a town engineer ever inspecting a perimeter drain.
Now, what about that grass swale?
It's all done, everything's done, it was all put on the as-built.
Okay.
In the gra, in the grass, the last time I was here, you wanted to see grass grow, and the grass is growing. It's, it's done, it's completely done.
That's that last lot, right?
Yes, these people want to close on their loan with the bank, and this is what we're waiting for, so that we can get this permit.
I saw them mowing it today. Go on.
Yep.
We're okay.
Yeah, I think.
If we're okay, Rich. We're okay, Rich.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I'm fine.
All right, I just would have liked the.
They're the ones that brought the issue up, right now, they're the ones that brought the issue up.
This tough up that wasn't done, and I would have liked to follow up. When was this stuff completed?
Yeah.
It's, it's been done probably for about two, at least two weeks now. Everything's been completed.
Did you notify the DPW?
We, we have been in touch with them over this, but again, why, why is a town engineer looking at perimeter drains? I don't understand this.
I don't.
I honestly, I don't.
Wanted evidence that they were in.
And that's what he's saying.
He was talking to Caltech units, and they want evidence that they were in.
And he said he did this back in.
And we got that, that the last meeting, I believe, we received something about that.
And he received all the pictures for that.
Correct.
He, he okayed that.
Correct.
But it's the perimeter drain that, that is in question, and he doesn't inspect that.
Yeah.
That's what I don't understand.
And that's what this is saying, he said this was done in twenty, July fourteenth, 2021, that it was done, it was inspected and. Picture, I don't understand it either.
I would have rather had a memo to him saying that the, that the stuff I couldn't find on the originals, you know, as-built, I now see. And it's complete to the print, to your, to your as-built.
Right.
That's what I wanted to say.
I know, but you're not gonna see a perimeter drain that seven people over there.
I don't, I don't know where the perimeter drain is coming from.
That's what, that's what I'm saying, that's what this is showing, it was done, and.
Yeah, I understand, I understand. And Mary talked to the building commissioner, I don't know where that, was that on here? What, the DPW's original thing was the perimeter drain?
I think, I think it was, and I, I think Dan has a good point. If it's the building inspector's job to inspect it, why did the DPW even look at it?
I don't know. I guess the DPW was just saying, okay, I can't tell if it has, has those low surface drainage for the roof installed.
But yeah, they're.
And I don't think he really should even have to worry about that.
There are two different things here, there's this.
He was talking, he couldn't find, like Greg said, he couldn't find the swale that was mentioned on here. Couldn't see it, okay? And you admitted it wasn't in yet.
Correct, one side was not in, yeah.
Then some type perimeter, what is it?
Perimeter drain. He didn't see the perimeter drain.
Because it was.
And he didn't see the cul-de-sac chambers. And then the pictures came out for the cul-de-sac chambers.
Remember those?
And now we've got the perimeter drain confirmation.
Right. And there was a letter from Thaddeus Skoda, engineer, wasn't there? Is that?
Yeah, that was saying.
From Summit, Summit Engineering, Summit.
But I think it was Thaddeus Skoda.
Whatever, we know it's in the ground now.
Yeah.
And everything's done. I just wanted the DPW to finalize their site plan review. They're the ones that go out and do the site plan review. Now, why he mentioned the other stuff in the ground, I don't know. But he couldn't find a couple things that were on the site plan, but not on the ground yet. That was, that was my concern, and that was his concern.
Right, but what he was responsible for, he's already did in the last meeting, verified that, and it's the building inspector who does the perimeter drain, who verified that today.
I understand that, I understand. And you got, you've got all your documentation.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, everyone's happy, you know, make a motion to accept the as-built and to recommend a issuance of an occupancy permit.
I'll make that a motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call.
I vote aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye, carried unanimously.
Thank you.
I just want, I just would like the departments to follow up when they mention they've got issues, they follow up at the end, please. If staff could remind them to do that. Even if, even if it's an email.
So Tony, who, what is the deal? I mean, who is supposed to be inspecting what?
Well, the as.
That's what we just discussed.
The, the as-built is, 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 the as-built, though, is DPW.
The stormwater, the cul-de-sac, who's supposed to inspect that?
Stormwater as, sorry.
No, go ahead.
It should be DPW. They're gonna sign off on the stormwater as-built. Been a couple of hectic weeks getting ready for town meeting.
No, I understand now, I understand. I, I understand Jared's pulled as far as he can be pulled, in all different directions, and. Again, when you write a memo that says you can't accept the, you can't accept the as-built because of this, this, and this, and this, okay? Board should have confirmation at the end that he now recognizes that this, this, this is done. Okay, that's all. But we got enough evidence, you told us it's in.
And everything, yeah.
It's okay, I'm okay now. I just like, I just like to dot the i's, cross the t's. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, time being seven oh five, we have a public hearing on Two Fail On Ave. First read the public hearing notice. pursuant to the provisions of Oxford zoning bylaw, chapter five, table two, uses in a commercial district and. Chapter fifteen, projects requiring review, the Oxford Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, May ninth, 2022, at seven oh five PM in the town hall, on a special permit and site plan review and approval application submitted by Two Fail On Ave Realty LLC to allow for a mixed use of commercial on the first floor and a residential apartment on the second floor to occupy space within the existing building that has existing parking on a property located at Two Fail On Ave, Oxford, Mass, in the Village Business Zoning District, owned by Two Fail On Ave Realty LLC, and shown on its assessors map, thirty-three E, parcel E twelve. And applications and plans could be reviewed at the town hall, and anyone wishing to be here should be here. And I'll first read into their record. I've got a, everyone in front of them has response from a technical review. And from Mary, from Rick A. Sterrett of the Board of Health. Hi, Mary, the septic system has been approved by the Board of Health and variances were granted. Contact the Board of Health when system is to be installed, so that all necessary inspections can be done. I have no other comments at this time. So, the engineer is here, the public's.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Show what you want to propose to do.
Sure, Peter Engel with McClure Engineering. Basically, the existing building has four units on the first floor and offices on a partial second floor. The owner is intending to convert one of those commercial units on the first floor into a pizza shop and convert the offices on the second floor into a single apartment. Like you just read, there is a septic system expansion proposed for the increased flow from the pizza shop and the apartment. And that was approved last August. We looked at the parking to make sure that all worked out. I think, you know, we meet the bylaw that we're not increasing the required parking by more than twenty-five percent. We are maintaining ADA access, and we've reworked some of the parking along the main street side of the building to kind of eliminate any access from Main Street that will either be blocked off or removed. But, you know, they're trying to make use of this building that currently doesn't have much use.
So they'd have to turn right onto Fail On Ave to park.
Yep.
You won't be able to turn from Main Street.
Right.
We gotta watch out, in Phantom, you've got that other entrance.
Right.
Off of Main Street.
Yeah.
I want, I want that gotten rid of, and I want grass in its place.
Yeah.
I don't want anyone going in there.
Right.
Richard, what are you talking about? Show me.
Yeah, in the corner.
It's grassy, though.
Yeah.
It looks like a driveway.
Where the dumpster, where the dumpster used to be for the package store.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's, that's a paved surface going right off Main Street there. And my recol, my understanding is that when the liquor shop was in there, they, they had big trucks that had to go into that area so they could unload it.
But you're proposing to block all that off, yes?
Block it or rip it out.
I'd like you to rip it out. Is that okay?
Technically, it's the state's property, so I don't know.
Well, we get, we gotta get Jared involved, we gotta get Jared involved, and it only makes sense to do this.
Yeah.
Because that's an accident bound to happen.
Yeah.
When this thing starts again.
Mr. Chairman, it's noted on the plan that the applicant states they would work with DPW.
Okay.
And SDOT.
Right.
With respect to blocking it or removing it.
I mean, I know that, I know the town maintains the grass right away, okay?
Yep.
So, we'd like to get that done. I'd like to get it done before you're, you got occupancy permits myself, so no one will dare to use that thing. Because I just see that as an accident waiting to happen.
What was the other thing I heard about only a, a right-hand turn?
Well, you, well, coming from that way, you can make a left-hand turn from the other, but you wouldn't be able, right now, people can cut right through there to get into the parking lot, we don't want to do that. So if you have Fail On Ave come.
You have to, you have to use Fail On Ave as its entrance.
Yeah.
Tony, where would they be cutting over the lot?
So they've, they've rearranged these parking spaces here.
That's, that's a proposed rearrangement of the parking spaces, though.
Right.
Right now, they're up against the building.
Correct.
Right.
Okay. And so we're gonna get rid of the, the driveway as indicated, heading towards the traveled way, right? That area, that's gone.
Yeah.
And then there's gonna be some kind of barrier to make sure that nobody can pull
Yeah.
off of Main Street before Fail On Ave.
You got it.
Yeah, because we're gonna get another bite at the apple when Cumberland Farms closes on all those parcels. We're gonna get to close off a few more.
Yeah.
Entries onto Main Street, maybe save a few more motorcyclists' lives.
Yeah.
All right, so the cor, so down to the corner at Fail On will be blocked off.
Right. You, you're not proposing any berm?
Uh, there's a sidewalk there now.
Which is good.
So, we'd have to raise that sidewalk if we're gonna berm that, or, I guess we could put a berm on the, between the sidewalk and the parking lot.
Yeah.
Well, you got your parking ready, they're gonna, they're gonna be, they're gonna be backing up right onto the sidewalk. That, that's, that's my, that's another fear I have.
So let's do it.
How you gonna swing out of there to get around?
Let's do it. That's, this is a really, now that we have the crosswalk right there, too, right?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Left turning out of Fail On.
Right.
Flip a coin if you hit the, hit the solar thing there. But this is a nasty little section.
Yeah.
We have regular traffic accidents right before the Cumberland Farms and this, this strip mall.
I mean, you have to have the sidewalk there.
Yeah. Big time.
Do you need that, I, I know what you're saying, they're gonna.
Yeah, they try to turn so they can turn around and go out Fail On again.
Yeah. If you got rid of that lot, I mean, I don't know, you know, I mean, you get rid of that last parking spot there, is that enough?
The grass that in, they're gonna be going into the grass.
Yeah.
So the, the back end of the building where the, is currently, I think, an esthetician or.
Used to be a tattoo parlour, it was the last one.
And a barber shop, and now there's a new tenant in there. So we're talking about a pizza shop in the middle?
So the pizza shop, where the liquor store used to be.
Okay. There.
Yeah.
And how about next door to that?
They don't have a tenant as of now, it would have to be some kind of retail space.
Okay.
Similar to what the past uses have been in that portion of the building, I guess.
Okay. And the expansion of the septic will accommodate the two apartments upstairs?
So just one apartment, they originally wanted to do two, but it was gonna be difficult to get two means of egress for each one of those. So we convinced them to go with one, and so the increase of flow from the apartment and the pizza place is basically what that septic expansion's for.
Okay.
Rich.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna play devil's advocate here, so I don't want to get on your bad side. But I know you don't. You're probably gonna, I, in my head, I would more prefer them to come to park in those spots from Main Street because you're backing out of those spots right into Fail On, and that's a lot more dangerous than pulling in, backing up, and then having them come out Fail On head-on.
Well, every one of those parking spaces back out into Fail On.
Mm-hmm.
If they, if that's your argument, they're all no good.
But those, but the ones on the building are further from the intersection. Those are gonna back right onto the, right onto that crosswalk.
Right. Right.
I mean, that's what we're talking, yeah, yeah, that's, that's absolutely right. That's why, if you got rid of, if you only had two of them over there, there'd be enough room to make.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if you limit it to two, maybe three.
Right, that's what I thought, yeah.
And would it make more sense if you split the parking places towards the building instead of out?
That's the way they were.
Yeah, that's where they were. Look on the picture, that's how I see it, like.
Yeah, so we're gonna, so you're moving them.
I think if we left it the way it is now.
It's worse.
And getting rid of that access off of Main Street, it would make it tough for them. There's not a lot of room between.
No.
The sidewalk in that, in the sidewalk and the sidewalk on the building, so if a car was parked.
If you had, if you had two spaces over there, I think there'd be enough turn, backup where they wouldn't go onto the sidewalk, but they're definitely gonna back up onto the grass.
They've got a, they've got a packing problem as it is, they're, they're banging into the minimum, okay?
Yeah.
That's the way it was at.
But this is what we talked about with some of these downtown areas, that parking shouldn't be, especially if they're gonna make, you know, who's to say now that they blocked that off, that you couldn't have parking on Main Street right there? You know, that's all.
They could, they could, they could have parking, they could have three or four on Main Street.
Right. Is that, you don't see what I'm saying? Is it, if that's not in the downtown, that's not part of the downtown district?
It just ends like a parcel over.
Really?
Oh. So they messed up in that way?
Yeah. Because it would make sense.
That, too.
It makes sense.
There's no on-street parking there, either.
I don't know why.
No, what I'm saying, but you're, you're making that safe, if you did block all that off, then it would be perfectly fine.
So you need those spaces, right?
And it's based on square, it's based on square footage of the building, how many parking spaces you need, and I thought, again, that's not in the downtown.
We could lose two spaces and still be at the, within that twenty-five percent increase thing.
I think either way, it's gonna be crappy, but I think, oh, I'm sorry, did I, did I say crappy?
That was a term of art.
Right.
Yes.
I can't even think of a big word for that. I think, honestly, I think it's safer if you pulled in from Main Street with two spots on that side, and then backed a little out, and then out to Fail On versus backing out to Fail On, I think is.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, crazy, yeah, oh, yeah.
You gotta, you gotta look at your turning radii and that, and see where you, where you can, people aren't gonna use the spaces if they can't back it out.
Those eighteen-foot spaces?
Uh, those are the compact spaces.
Oh.
Yeah.
That's even worse.
Well, if, if you look, if you start.
That's even worse.
With that little.
Those four.
Seldomly used driveway right there.
Yeah.
Okay? Fail On, there's at least two curb cuts for the existing Cumberland Farms, right?
Yep.
Sunny Farms, that parcel is just wide open.
Yep.
Pull onto Main Street anywhere, right?
Yeah, they're gonna fix all that, they've been in front of technical review, they, they're doing a pretty good job with that so far. Well, they'll be coming in front of us soon, too.
I guess my next, how, how difficult would it be to rezone that to incorporate the downtown?
Same mechanics as any zoning.
Yeah.
That wouldn't change the matter before us.
No, I know.
Thinking outside the box.
And I'm sure you wouldn't want the dumpster.
No, no.
Wish to have that as employee parking, would be less frequent.
That'd be something, yeah, if that was just, that's not a bad idea.
Sign it as employee parking.
That, that I think would be a good idea.
That'd be a good idea.
Well, that's why, that's why I mentioned some sort of berm so that it would prevent them from going onto the sidewalk.
Right. I don't think that's unreasonable to ask them to put a berm right along the sidewalk, you know, just so they.
No, I don't either. And, and, and the employee parking is, that's a good idea.
That's a good idea.
Because anybody at five o'clock trying to back a car up there.
Good luck.
Good luck. Don't be in a hurry.
Or actually any o'clock.
Where's your residential parking?
We don't have it designated, but more than likely, it would.
It'll be near, it'll absolutely be near the entrance of the apartment.
It'll be more all the way down to the left, that would assume.
Yeah.
Is there anybody in that apartment now?
Not to mine.
That you know.
How would you, yeah, I guess.
That you know of.
Would, would that have to be like signs saying this is residential, you know, parking for tenant only or something like that? You have to have signs up.
Yeah, we can add some signage there.
So if you took those, if you decreased from four spaces to two spaces on the, like, the Main Street side, that would still?
We could.
I just think it's gonna be tight.
Should, do we still need to lose those spots?
No, if it's only employee parking, no, except that, you're limited to what kind, sorry, I said, somebody with a, a F-150 is not gonna be able to park there.
Right.
Oh, but they'll try, and it'll be fun to watch. Christine, I, I think if they put a berm along the entire sidewalk, they're welcome to try to.
Back up into it, yeah.
Back into anything they want there.
Try, tries the word. Um, can I have a quick question? Are you showing the existing sidewalk on private property?
It is.
Interesting. Does the deed refer to that being on private property?
Uh, the survey is, is representative of the deed, both those drill holes on that side are by the property corners.
That is very interesting. I love this down.
Anyone else have any further questions at this point? I guess we've got some public that would love to discuss this with us.
One at a time. You gotta come in front of the mic, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, good evening, Pam Lewis, I'm representing Lewis Trust. We abut the land that we're discussing, and you actually brought up two of our points and our concerns this evening. Our first concern was with the septic. We know that it has a limited septic existing now, and that we're just making sure that the expansion of what they want to do with the property is gonna, the new septic system is gonna accommodate that for us. So that's my first concern.
They gave them a memo from the Board of Health.
Yep. Yeah.
So, so.
Design is gonna take care of everything that's proposed.
So that nothing new is going into the old septic? Everything that's.
Right.
Is going into, okay, so that's our first concern, and our second concern is the other concern with the parking there is also a concern for us because our land abuts that area as well. And when there's been a lot of commercial property there, when the pharmacy was there, if you remember with the pharmacy, so much litter and trash. We would like some kind of fencing to sort of, you know, prevent all of the trash and everything from, from getting into our property.
Yeah.
It's, it's, and it's a very tight area, that parking area, and it, it's, you know, so that's a concern, too, for us, the parking area that you were talking about. That's my two concerns.
Yeah, that's good, no, yeah.
Is there room for fencing at the end of that parking?
I believe there is a fence.
I think there is a fence there, but you don't want, you don't want to lose the sightline, or if you put, you wouldn't put, yeah, the dumpsters used to be over there, right? Still, I don't know if it's still there or not.
The dumpster's in the back, behind the septic right now.
Yeah.
There's proposed privacy fence shown in the plan.
On this property, I think the Lewis Trust is that hole up top.
You're writing back, right, you're writing back, right. Is there, is there existing fence there now or not? No.
Oh, fence posts, old, an old fence, I guess.
What is that clouded area on the, I can't read from here?
Snow storage.
Okay.
Not a lot.
It doesn't snow much over there, huh?
No.
Yeah, I guess there was maybe an old fence there at one point in time.
Some sort of fencing there to just establish the.
Some sort of fencing there to just establish the, the border.
Yeah.
Where the parking is gonna be.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Onto our.
There's a ton of garbage that comes from that place, a good ton, I've been there for forty-eight years picking up garbage.
That's where it all collects, yeah.
You know, you asked if they wouldn't mind the dumpster, if you were gonna use privacy fence anyway, dumpster could be in that, that front area. And you could, you could gain your two, your spaces back down there and.
That's a good point, too. And then there's no issue at all over that, at that end. I don't know how much room is over there.
Um, you can definitely get one space, I don't want a lot of two, but.
Well, you're talking about.
If you're fine with.
You're talking about getting rid of two.
If you're fine with privacy fencing around the dumpster in the front, we can certainly do that.
And that would help them a lot, too.
They're looking for a fence to prevent stuff from blowing in. Right, so one.
And if that pizza parlor, that'd be better for them, too. If the pizza parlor's going, that'd be better for them, yeah, that makes, now, if the pizza parlor's going in that right-hand corner there, if we're looking at it.
They're closer to the dumpster.
Close to the dumpster.
They're gonna generate.
Yeah.
Well, wait a second, is there gonna be one dumpster for this entire building? It's gonna be empty daily.
Yeah.
The pizza parlor.
Pizza place.
Right.
The pizza place, it's not, yeah.
They gotta, they gotta, they gotta maintain a clean environment, so if it takes every day.
Well, I'm, yeah, once a week, that's a week. The pizza parlor, it's not a.
Well, that's, that's food for your.
Usually you have a cardboard one, yeah.
I wouldn't mind the dumpster being there as long as it wasn't in sight.
Yep.
You'd have to look at, yeah, and the fencing would help a lot, too, yeah.
Fence there.
That would be great.
That'd be a win, be a win-win.
Otherwise, when they come to empty it, it just flies, you know, when it goes up, all the trash just flies all over, into our yard.
So towards the back of the building, like, more towards, I, I got, back of the building, so you're looking for a fence just towards the back or to the side to, to kinda?
Where the parking is to the, to the.
Yep, on the other side, though, I was thinking, towards the back of the building.
Yep.
So, and there's a house there, so are you looking for fencing to kinda?
That would be great, too.
To, to like an L, to just so that it's totally blocked off?
Yes.
Traveling right next door, cause we're right with, a little like this.
So you're, you're on this, like, that white house in the corner?
No.
Exactly, and it's, you know, that's a residential house.
Right. But I was thinking it might be good to, if you're gonna fence it.
Wherever there's a dumpster, there needs to be a fence, otherwise the stuff just flies, picked up, that's when the trash.
No, I, I used to want, yeah.
A lot, I've been there a long time, you know, so it's always been a lot of trash.
Okay, anyone else wanna speak?
Rich, I have one suggestion, that maybe they could, um, on the parking on the right. Is it possible they could pull that parking back and make that snow storage bigger? I mean, it seems like there's a lot of room, or am I not looking at something, yeah? Pull that down and then made more, uh, snow storage above, cause that's not gonna be much.
Well, if the dumpster is over there, you'd have plenty.
Where's the dumpster? They're not proposing a dumpster on this side, right?
Talking about, I, I propose they could go there as long as it was properly fenced, and they're looking for a fence on that, on that side of the building.
Yeah.
Yep.
Then there'd be plenty of them. Just how much room he's got over there now, you'd have to see if you can get two parking spaces or not.
I think we can make it work.
Yeah, brother, you know, so the pizza parlor would like that better, too.
Yep.
Yeah, they're gonna generate a majority.
And you take care of all that, that pack won't be over there, you have to.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, it looks like the required parking, they just meet the requirement, if I recall, so any reduction of parking would have to be evaluated.
So, there's the.
He's doing some interpretation.
The wording about the twenty-five percent increase, then you don't have to, yeah, I guess then we'd be eliminating existing spaces. Maybe we do need the twenty-three, is that what I have on there?
Yeah, you, you're, you're, you have it at twenty-three.
So if we decrease that, I guess we would.
Is the board willing to consider a waiver? If it gets the fence and the trash and all that?
I mean, it is an existing building, I mean.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I, I mean, I, I like everything he's trying to do.
Technical review, they were gonna have two, two apartments up top that would require four parking spaces, just for the two apartments.
If we could, if we could make those spaces.
Data one, which reduced two.
Instead of nine feet wide, we might be able to maintain that number of spaces, semi-compact space.
Just concerned about, I'm just concerned about the, you know, the, the, this parking on the front there, that, uh, how are they gonna get out? Making it employee parking is one thing, if you leave when the place is closed, you'll be going there, get the whole parking lot to deal with. It's not customer parking.
So, is this, is this, I mean, I guess, what kind of pizza parlor, is it gonna be like a takeout only, is it gonna be a sit-down?
Uh, minimal indoor seating, I think, Board of Health approval limits it to fifteen seats.
So is that still, is that, Tony, is that still based on how the square footage of a, of a restaurant, of how many parking spaces you have to have?
Believe so.
For the restaurant.
For the retail restaurant.
It's all, yeah. Cause that's where we could make an exception if it's.
Yeah, the restaurant's at one space per one hundred and fifty square feet.
Anyone else?
So, just that pizza place alone requires ten spaces.
And people the way they are are gonna wanna park right up that end of the, you can have, uh, put another one there if you move the dumps to the other side, but are they gonna walk all the way from there all the way over to there?
That's how good the pizza is.
Yeah, you're right, there's some of that. I don't know, I exhausted what I wanted, I wanted to say.
I know, I, I like the whole idea, I mean, I like the idea a lot, I just wish that, you know, I don't think we can get you a waiver, I don't think we're, we can't say, okay, well.
Hey, I hope they're successful and they're, they're using all their parking spaces, I know P and D doesn't have anywhere near that amount of space.
No.
You know, there's others that don't either, but, you know, we gotta kinda go by.
That's why I was hoping with that.
Bylaw, so that we don't have a problem with it packing on Fairlon Ave.
Right.
That's a good point, Jeff, Tony, can, we can't waive parking, can we? If it's a zoning bylaw.
There's a require variance, um, when that, yeah.
That's why, well.
Which is what we were, really trying to avoid in tech review.
Right, yeah.
Get them, cause originally they're proposing two residential units above, so they reduced it down to one.
And that's what we see here?
And a convenience store.
Correct, yes.
Just one, one large apartment upstairs.
But right now, putting up a privacy fence at both ends of the building to keep any trash on-site, on-site, and moving the dumpster to the Main Street end, are you losing a parking space by doing that?
And then if this was a, a takeout-only pizza parlor, would that change the regulations?
Well, the market's gonna dictate that, a lot of it is takeout, these are delivered, there's gonna be pizza delivery.
I know, well, I'm just trying to get away of, you know, they take ten spaces when they only need five, say.
That's with the bylaw.
I know.
So, um, it was written before.
Yeah, I know.
Delivery.
I'm trying, yeah, right, but that, you know, I mean, cause there's certain places, like, I'm thinking of that place where Burgaram used to be, I mean, they have basically four parking spaces, and it's all just takeout only, there's no dining only.
Yeah, but they got.
They're all in the back, it's huge.
There's spots in the back, too.
So, if I may, Mr. Chairman, there might be opportunity to move those four parking spaces if you wish, closer, no more than five feet or so, and maybe have a small dumpster, dumpster similar size.
Yep.
Near the fence, enclosed.
And if you put it right at the end of one of those spots, and if it's an employee spot, the employee can just move to, when the truck comes.
Yeah, you could pack right in front of the dumpster, it wouldn't matter.
Right, and they still get all the fencing and stuff like that, and it should be good.
And as far as the fencing, how, how tall, what do we usually do for the privacy fence?
I don't know, that's, Board of Health has a certain size fence.
Yeah, standard has been six, six to vinyl.
Six, a vinyl fence.
Building code changed recently, that now a seven-foot fence is allowed.
Okay.
Probably be better.
It'd be better, especially with lights and all that stuff.
So we're talking about a, a fence on that side.
And on the other side.
Basically from that upper-right lot corner, along the, along the, uh, I'm sorry, what was the last name again?
Lewis.
I'm sorry, along that property, probably tying into the house and on the other side, along that side, maybe even along both the side and the back.
You're going all length of the back of that building?
No, 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 not, not in the back of the building.
I was gonna say from the corner, yeah.
Only to the corner of the building.
Go back to the front there, from the corner of the building across, straight across to the property line.
Right.
Give the neighbor that. Hey, even though you're gonna lose your, uh, snow storage.
But if you pull, I guess, how, how far can you pull those parking spaces?
Not much.
Not much.
Well, we can lose that one on the end.
Yes.
Cause we'll gain the one with the dumpster.
That's true.
That's true.
That's true.
You've got enough to work on, I, I just wanna make sure your people can, if you designate an employee, that's okay. But the employees don't have to learn how to back out of there, it's gonna be all backwards driving.
Give them helmets.
I think, yeah, everything is, is doable, so.
Could I just go back to my old, but wouldn't, and I'm just saying, is that, if you did them towards the way that they are now.
They're not on motorcycles.
If you did three, I just think it would be easy to back up to get out, if you, if you're not backing it up until, I mean, cause now you're going out, you turn around and come out, at least if they were facing the building like they do now, just back up and go out.
Right, I agree, but I don't think he can do that, I don't think you'll be able to back up without going into that sidewalk.
Right now, they can use all the grass that's over there.
And if we put the dumpster out front, I don't know how we would.
Cause right now, they just go right up to the grass, cause there's nothing over there, basically.
Can you just look at that, though, as an option?
Yeah, I can take a look.
But how, how are you gonna address the fact that the, the sidewalk is on, on the taxpayer's property?
I'm still, I'm curious about that, whether that's accurate or not.
I had a PLS do the survey, so I would hope so.
Surprised me.
And it's, it's.
That might have been a concession for getting there paved delivery area at the time, I don't know. Could have been, cause, uh.
That would make sense.
Cause Main Street was.
Yeah.
Rearranged and redone.
I'm more concerned about pedestrians and motorcyclists.
Backing out.
Yeah.
I've just seen tons of motorcyclists get really banged up, if not. So.
I'm just glad they're closing all that in, that, that'll be a step in the right direction, yeah.
And, and if you do put a berm there, backing up isn't gonna be possible because you're only looking at twenty-four, maybe twenty-eight feet.
Right.
Including the parking spot.
I just think that's gonna be really hard to.
Yeah, right, I agree.
Well, it's, it's, it's employee parking, that's all you could say, that the employees are gonna have to navigate, not, not customers. They'll be filled every day that customers come, cause the employees will be back there.
Maybe angled parking? That might work.
I think we looked at that, and we, it doesn't, we, we lose spaces. And it actually pushes everything further into the street.
And I think to Max's point, that the section's just gonna get so much busier with the new combies coming, you know what I mean? That's gonna be crazy, yeah.
Well, I think, I think we've got a chance to improve it by, by blocking off all the different accesses.
Step one, it's step, step one.
You can have three cars, all turning left and all having a place to go.
Yeah.
You know, provided they don't hit the, the bicyclist coming up the sidewalk, I mean, it's, it's the Wild West over there.
I mean, it's still, you know, the other thing, too, it's gonna be, uh, deliveries is gonna be a nightmare, there are any kind of.
Well, the trucks are going down Fairlon Ave, I can tell you that now, the delivery trucks are going down Fairlon Ave, turning into where that building is in the back.
Yeah.
Okay, and get rid of, or getting rid of Ralph's infamous blocks, concrete blocks. Yeah.
Yeah.
Remember that?
Yep.
That's gonna be improvement over on that side, too.
Right.
A lot of improvement.
Yeah, no, yeah.
They're gonna have limited ways to get in their sight, so. Anyway, you got our suggestions?
Yep. We'll run with them. Do our best.
When would you like to come back?
Next meeting.
Wanna come back the next meeting?
Sure.
We've got a hell of a meeting the next.
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah.
A long wait.
Sure about that?
Can I be first?
Entertain a motion to continue this, uh, public hearing till, uh, May, what is it, the twenty?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third at, might as well say eight o'clock.
Put your waiters on.
No, then we don't wanna do that, though, just in case we end up, remember how you said at the, that meeting?
I don't think that one's not, I don't think they're not showing up for that one, I think.
Yeah, remember how we said we didn't wanna like bump out at the same time, because.
We're waiting at that meeting. Seven oh five.
Yeah, yeah, we know that one's a big one. If it's, if it even, if it starts, it's gonna run an hour, easy.
What's the next meeting after that? I'm sure they don't wanna, I'm sure they don't wanna wait, but.
Thirteen.
You might be better off.
Yeah.
I can't tell you.
Wanna come in on the thirteen?
Then we'll do it at seven oh five.
If you're glutton for punishment, come on in on the first.
Give you plenty of time to think about.
Cause then, then we, then we could do seven oh five, and then.
Give it your best, because.
Yeah.
Okay, seven oh five on, uh, June thirteenth?
Yeah.
Good?
Yeah.
Okay, you have a motion?
I'll make that a motion.
Did you take a building down on your property?
Did you what?
Where the hair salon was, did you take a building down?
No.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion?
Everything's still there, all right.
I, I vote aye.
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 I thought it was like a barn or something come down.
No.
I was imagining it, Normie, thank you.
Yeah, put that on old business, I'll, we'll be zoned after downtown.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.
Once I'll get fixed up, that would help a lot.
Okay, time, we have a seven-ten public hearing, I'll open a first reading of public hearing notice. Pursuant to the provisions of Oxford zoning bylaw, chapter three, subsection three point nine, apartments dash accessory slash in-law, the planning board will hold a public hearing on Monday, May ninth, twenty-twenty-two, at seven-ten PM in the Oxford Town Hall on a special permit application submitted by George Duran to allow the construction and occupancy of an addition for use as an in-law apartment attached to a single-family dwelling on property located at eighty-seven Ennis Road, Oxford, Mass, in an R-three residential building. It's yours or mine?
It's yours, no.
And recorded, indeed, uh, book sixty-five-two-fifty-six, page one ninety-two, and shown on assessors map, oh-eight B, parcel A-oh-seven. Application may be reviewed in the Oxford, in the Town Hall, and anyone wishing to be here should be here. And what do I have here? Okay, I have another, uh. I have another memo from, uh, the Board of Health, from Ricky Sterrett, eighty-seven Ennis Road, in-law addition. Hi, Mary, septic design plan is still in the process of being approved by Steve. Prior to the installation of the new system, owners should. Prior to the installation of the new system, owners should contact Board of Health to inform them and ensure all necessary inspections of the new system are done where needed. I have no other comments at this time. And that's the, uh, only, I don't know, what is that?
I've never seen this before either.
That's our permit.
That's our septic permit, they did approve it on April twenty-eighth.
This is, this is.
It's just a engineer.
Disposal system means septic.
The engineer had to change the size of the tank, because they wanted it bigger, so.
All right. Well, the only first comment, looking at this, is you're increasing the size of your house immensely with this in-law apartment, what is it, on the second floor, and the garage is underneath?
Yeah, our, our driveway's like a hill, so we'll be bringing it down, so our driveway would just drive into the garage on the, on the lower level, instead of putting a basement, it'd just be a garage. And then, the in-law apartment technically would be on the first floor, matched up with our current one, so our second floor is still higher than the addition. We live on a hill.
Okay, so are you building a three-car garage, or the new structure will include a three-car garage, is that something new to the property?
The three-car garage, yeah, that whole gray area.
Yeah.
And so, instead of pouring a foundation and having a basement, we're gonna have it as a garage, so it'll be a cement basement, a garage.
So, right now, there's nothing there, right now, there's nothing there.
Nothing there, no.
There's no basement or anything like that.
Just a driveway that's on a hill. Well.
Okay.
It is what it is, I mean, I understand what you're trying to do.
I mean, I mean, a lot of that.
You're increasing your house, plus you're putting in an in-law apartment.
We're a family of eight, living in a.
Oh, my God.
Well, we have, we're a family of six, and we, in-laws are a family, mainly, just them two.
The house is currently a two-family.
Right.
They only have two.
But, I, I, I'm, one of my guests, my point is, a lot of this square footage is being taken up by this three-car garage, I would assume, I mean.
No, it's a single-family unit.
So, eight hundred and twen, excuse me.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get the whole.
Excuse me, eight hundred and twenty-eight square feet is only living space?
For the in-laws.
For the in-law, so.
The garage is not considered living space?
No, the existing, right now, is two-story, that'll be our place, so our kitchen and living common areas, everything downstairs, and our bedrooms will be upstairs. And we're gonna, she currently lives on the second floor, so when the addition's done, we're just gonna move her over, then renovate the second floor for the bedrooms and all that, and then we'll occupy the bedrooms. So, the, if you wanna consider us, well, we won't be an apartment, uh, multifamily, would, will be a single-family with the in-laws.
That's what they said we had to do.
That's where you're, yeah.
Because they said we couldn't have two of the, one unit was significantly larger, so that's why we had to come for this change.
I think it's pretty straightforward.
Huh?
Yeah.
It's pretty straightforward.
It's just a one-bedroom, uh, in-law unit.
With a tiny office, because she works from home now, so.
Yeah, I see the office, too. Okay. You have anything else?
No.
Okay. Entertain a motion to, I have any public comment, anyone that really wants to speak to this, okay. Motion to close the public hearing.
Feel moved.
So, moved by Greg?
I'll second.
I'll second it.
Okay.
It's already seconded.
I second it by Roger's second.
Okay.
I can hear him down there.
Oh, hey, hey, don't fight over.
More sensitive than you look, you know.
I knew you and Roger were gonna fight tonight. Okay.
I'll fight Roger, he's too sensitive a guy.
Go ahead.
I make.
No, 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 no.
Aye.
Aye, I vote aye, sorry.
Aye.
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 Aye. Carried unanimously, okay, go ahead.
Go ahead, no, go ahead, Craig.
Uh, I make a motion that we approve this application as submitted. That makes it easy?
You're not changing anything.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Roger, for the discussion.
I vote aye, I'm sorry, I vote aye.
I vote aye.
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 Aye, carried unanimously, good luck to you.
Thank you.
On there, we go and apply for our permit, or how does that work? Like, yeah, okay.
That's above our pay grade.
No, we're going to just go and apply now?
Yes.
That man right behind you, Tim.
Yes.
We'll do the decision.
Thank you very much, thank you guys, good luck.
Now what?
Wow, that testy board tonight, isn't it?
I have a question, so, they're making that an in-law apartment, so what happens if they sell the house?
Like, if they sell the house, they can sell it as?
With an, uh, with an in-law, it's the decisions.
And who can, who regulates it when it gets sold, that it will actually be an in-law that's gonna be moving into the in-law apartment?
So, the decision will have to be recorded.
The deed says they have to, they have to keep it, they could rent it out.
But, and own occupied, they only have to.
Owner occupied, but they could rent it out.
They could rent it out to, other than an in-law?
Yes.
But it's always own occupied, they couldn't be like, oh, I'm gonna rent the whole house out and be like, oh.
That wasn't my question, I was just seeing if they could rent it out, like, to someone other than an in-law.
Because in-laws don't last forever.
Well, no, I'm just saying is that, we approve it based upon.
It has to go somewhere, right? They either suck it back into the house, and they, they like additional space.
Change the name of it to in-law slash.
In-laws don't last forever. For some of us.
I'll put that on a T-shirt.
Hey, hey, knock, there you go, none of us live forever, none of us do live forever.
No, we're punching tonight.
Geez, I'm telling you.
I'm afraid, Tony, I'm afraid.
Are you afraid?
I'm afraid.
I'm, I'm missing my agenda, I don't know where I am, thank you. Okay.
Where were we, now what?
All right, now what?
Yes.
Old business subdivision rules and regulations, presentation and discussion of working draft, that's right here, that's Tony's work.
Yes, and, and so I, I just sent this over, um, in your packets today, you just received it, and I, so I know you haven't had a chance to, to look over. What I will do, just really, um, brief here, so this working draft, emphasis on the word working, um, is the start of updating our subdivision rules and regs. This is not complete, by no means, um, so thus far, um, we've added additional definitions, um, included a section of most commonly, most frequent acronyms that are used in decisions, and also a section on administration as well, what this does not include is the rest of it, and what is that? The A and Rs, definitive preliminary subdivision rules, um, um, standards and requirements, and, um, the design guidelines. So, what I would like to do, um, is next month, come back with another section, um, so the, um, with respect to the A and R, and, uh, and then subsequent, kind of take this in, in chunks. The longest part, I would assume, would be perhaps the definitive, preliminary and definitive, we can do together at, at some point, um, but, um, but it's incorporating or updating those, um, design guidelines with, with DPW. But I, I envision, we're in May now, so next month, when I come back, I'll have a section for you folks to, um, to review, um, with respect to the A and R, matching up both application requirements and, and subdivision rules, rules and reg requirements, and then, um, following that, like I said, preliminary and definitive subdivision, um, requirements, and, um, and to include the updated design guidelines, um, as well, so that's everything from the piping, no, the utilities underground, language with respect to bonding and so on. Ultimately, at the end, um, I'll have a final draft with all of these parts put together, um, we'll also include, for your review, what the application forms would look like. Um, we're encouraging electronic, we're forcing electronic submission for, for these types, um, of applications, and, um, there will have to be a public hearing at some point, so perhaps late summer, early fall.
Yep.
And, um, and that's done, of course, through this board, as you know, um, doesn't require town meeting approval, it's, it's all, it's all yours.
Yep.
So, I just felt like it's been a month, so, and I, we did promise an update, so this is just a working draft. If anyone has questions, um, by all means, as we move along, feel free to give us a call in the office, too, I'm happy to, um, to, to work with you on this. So, that's all that I had for, um, for that subdivision rule.
So, Tony, just to clarify, so you have things in yellow within the documents, or is those things you added?
No, the, the, um, the yellow is, um, is actually for me to, to use some caution as I'm going along, you'll see that they'll reference an appendix C form fifteen, that does not exist right now, um, but it things to, literally a working draft, things to watch out for.
And so, so you don't highlight what you actually changed?
No, no, um, and at the end day, this document will include. So, this is thirteen pages, um, and includes a substantial amount of definitions.
So, you're planning on superseding the first section?
Correct.
And not showing the first part, I mean, showing the original and then showing the revised?
Correct, I could.
Yeah.
If that's the desire, but.
I don't know if that's.
When, when was the last time these were revised?
Twenty fifteen.
Yeah, it's due, I mean, it's due, but that was, now that, uh, we're allowing stuff that is allowed in our, uh, rules and regulations, we gotta get it updated.
Yeah, and you know.
DPW's issues and everything else.
Yeah, and, and, and hopefully this will be an informative document as well, so, um, and what I, what I mean by that is, we've added things such as tech review in here, um, complete streets, um, definitions for that, um, and by working document, when someone applies for an A and R, um, as they're filling out the form, also to guide them to, don't forget about the, um, the R factor, right? Or, um, the, um, the lot ratio, or so on, um, different reminders for folks, um, to, um, to incorporate either in their plans or as a side footnote.
Yeah.
And submissions, both paper always, but also, um, electronic as well, um, so we'll just be hopefully right ahead of the, of the game with these filings, so.
Tony, can I ask you a favor, can you email me that, your draft for this section?
Yes.
Awesome.
Yes, and I truly welcome everyone's feedback, um, anything, by all means, so. So, that's all that I had for this.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a submission, one fourteen Dana Road, application for land disturbance permit, and applicant owner Gary Bates, construction of a new single-family home with associated septic well, driveway, and drainage.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, the request here would be that this be done through administrative review, um, as requested through, through DPW.
Got a good submission here.
Covering on everything.
Yep, it's covered, looks like a failure.
Straightforward, not a crazy, not a crazy, not a crazy lot, no thirty percent driveway, or anything, no, yeah.
Very short driveway, considering. All right, entertain a motion to accept this submission, land disturbance permit.
Stormwater. Yeah, stormwater.
I mean, you got, you gotta watch out there.
Yeah.
Okay, and.
It is, it is.
What are we looking at? This DJ Enterprises is the property?
No, 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 no.
I don't think we got plans, right?
This is an individual house lot.
House lot, off of, on Dana, on Dana Road. Yeah, on Dana Road, no, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
On Dana Road.
See the file. I just want to make sure.
Labeled, uh, it's labeled with the.
Land disturbance permit.
Yeah, it says Dana Road, right on the file name.
Administrative.
Administrative, and that's what.
This is based on the new bylaw we have.
And this is Tony's recommend that we do, and Tony's recommend we do this through administrative.
Yeah, so, entertain, go ahead, make the motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept this plan for administrative review.
And that, recommended by DPW.
Recommended by DPW.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Roger, for the discussion, be it done?
I vote aye.
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 Aye. Aye, carried unanimously. But then we got another, another patient here for. DJ Enterprises Incorporated, owner looking for a common driveway, a special permit. About three lots on Howard, from.
And with this, Mr. Chairman, frontage is on Howard, um, access is also on Howard, um, we met, uh, during a tech review a few weeks back, and we also asked that they include the R factor for all the lots, which they did.
To show that they do have frontage. That was one of my problems, that. Okay, and also a land disturbance permit application, so entertain a motion to.
Uh, we can schedule that for June thirteenth.
June thirteenth at?
Seven ten.
At seven ten PM.
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Roger. Discussion?
Yeah, I do a question. Dan, have you been to conservation yet?
Yes.
And they, there's no issue with the estimated habitat, rare species, no?
Public hearing to bring it up if you.
Oh, that's right, they're still, fire department's still gonna do their thing.
Yeah, we're still, yeah, we're just, we're just scheduling that.
How come we haven't seen the fire department die in a while?
No issues, no issues. All right, I made the motion.
You made, you say?
Roger seconded it.
And now what are you gonna do?
We had discussions, right, oh, I vote aye.
Okay.
Aye.
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 Carried unanimously.
I'll set it.
Welcome.
All right, Tony, anything else?
Um, and then, Mr. Chairman, under new business, so I leave two requests, update on Eastland, and did I hear six oh eight main?
Yep.
Yeah, I just.
Okay.
Written prime with Jeff, so.
I was hearing that. Um, your call, Mr. Chair, board's call, uh, next meeting, or the meeting after?
Or the meeting after.
Or the meeting after.
Meeting after, next meeting, we have to reorganize.
Oh, God.
Every position is up for grabs, okay?
Wow.
I, I've been here a long time, okay, hoping for new participation in this arena here, if that's, you're so desired. There's nothing fixed about any of our positions, just want to let that be known, so, ponder that. I haven't been able to get rid of this position for twenty-eight years, so, whatever. Thank you, anyway, that's all my, that's all, the only thing I say in that, but we, we're gonna spend fifteen minutes, probably, at the next meeting, just doing that before we open our public hearing, so, a continued public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion that from now on, when we move from section to section, we say, now what?
I like that.
Tony, now what, I like that.
Kind of has a nice flow to it, I like it.
Right to the point.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Jeff, for the discussion, be it done?
I vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried unanimously.
Never gonna get used to that.
See you in two weeks.